Jim, for the appropriations.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, that's all.
The same thing.
It's the same thing. It's all-inclusive. It includes the salaries and then all of the supply lines, contractual service lines, capital outlay lines for all the funds that you guys approved budgets for for 19.
Done with the motion? A second? Comment? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those?
We got our 1782 notice back from the state. And they approved the county general as submitted, which is pretty happy about. It was kind of a surprise because I thought we were going to get it higher than what we could get approved for. But entertaining. And I appreciate all the help that I got, the budget committee got, budget for council. I appreciate the cooperation, the help of the commissioners, all the department heads as we worked through this budget. It wasn't an easy process, but we got it done. There's two or three other funds that we gotta work on, which is not a surprise. We have solutions for that. But all in all, that was the first time in several years that this has had an influence. So I appreciate all your hard work and efforts.
I think the first time was in '04, '05. And we got a 17, we had two notes cut back that year.
I remember that, yeah. 2005 being exact.
August, August.
It was, yeah, because it was like, yeah.
It was August telling you to cut your budget for that year.
Yes.
$2.7 million, 2.5 months left in here.
Some of the stuff that didn't get approved was budgets that had cash balances at night. And I checked back and forth yesterday. I assume there's...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. The cash balances in the budgets in the 1782 did not...
They just look at budgets. They don't look at real money when they're doing this. So when I, on the ones that we, one of them we knew after we adopted for sure that we were going to have to request an additional appropriation the next year because we adopted higher than we advertised. So that was the CCD fund. And then the other one, the other two, no, they don't, they don't really take into consideration the fact that you're sitting on $1.2 million in those funds when they approve the budget. They're just looking at appropriations and estimated revenue and on the, you know, of course, they have pretty good estimates on both of those. So, so, yeah, when I spoke to the DLGF rep, she said that you would just need to request additional appropriations after the first of the year. So that'll be the quickest, easiest way to move forward with those. And I had sent out a request and nobody responded that they wanted me to reply any differently than just accepting the 1782 notice. So I'll move forward with that today and then they'll get us our budget order and we'll have rates. So. And I think my preliminary calculations based on the 1782 notice is that the county tax rate should decrease slightly from last year as well. So, there you go.
Win-win.
Yeah.
Great reports. Commissioner?
I don't think I have the one thing. Do you have anything before we... I guess I would just like to start out by saying that we have a gentleman in the room that came on to council just a few months after I did that has served as council for many years and is having his last meeting today. The guy was very knowledgeable when he entered the council and I was fortunate, as long as, as well as Terry, to be able to work with Richard for many years, as you guys have been as well. And I would just like to say, Richard, it's been a pleasure and I appreciate the time that you have put into it and put into this county. And I'm going to ask Mr. Main to read a prepared statement.
Okay. I'm going to make this official.
Richard George came up here in Georgia. We really wanted to do this at a official commissioners' meeting, but we figured there'd be a strong tailwind headed south maybe right after this meeting we're having in Florida. So we didn't want to take advantage of the council, but I thought it was appropriate since this is a joint meeting that we do so. Anyway, besides the relationship I've had with Dick for my political career, so to speak, we also had a relationship going way back in the 1960s. I think he bought the, I've got the list out of Wingate, but it was either the third, fourth, or fifth case tractor that my dad ever sold in this community. And that was 1967 or 1968, if you remember.
Probably.
That was '68 when I graduated from high school. So I've known him for a number of years and appreciate him very much. But the commissioners wanted to put together a proclamation, so I will read it this time. It says, "Whereas Richard Chastain has faithfully served the citizens of Montgomery County as a member of the county council for more than a decade, and whereas Richard's last day of office as a member of the Montgomery County Council will be December 31, 2018, and whereas Richard Chastain has contributed significantly to the fiscal affairs of Montgomery County during his tenure as a council member and has worked collaboratively with the Board of County Commissioners on a number of important matters. And whereas Richard Chastain has also served our community in other significant ways as a volunteer, businessman, neighbor, and mentor. And whereas Richard Chastain has also served with distinction and been a leader in the Indiana National Guard and a champion of the interest of the veterans in Montgomery County. And whereas the citizens of Montgomery County have benefited greatly from Richard's service to and contributing in Montgomery County. And whereas Richard's dedication, professionalism, and service serve as an inspiration to the citizens of Montgomery County. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County find that Richard Chastain should be recognized for his service to Montgomery County, it is therefore resolved that in recognition of the service and many accomplishments of Richard Chastain, December 11, 2018 is hereby proclaimed to be Richard Chastain Day in Montgomery County."
Okay. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. There is only one that's been here longer than, well, Jimmy and Terry was here. Jimmy and Phil were here about three or four months before I was. There you guys.
That's all I have, anyway, because he's too good.
Only I want to add is we had our first comp plan public rollout of the new comp plan last night. Very well attended, I felt. 200-plus people at North Montgomery High School. Tomorrow night is at Crawfordsville High School, 6:00, and then following that, Thursday night at Southmont High School. So pretty exciting times. It's been a long, 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 long time coming. And that is online as well if you want, if anybody wants to look at.
There's nothing I want to thank Richard for his service. And I, in many meetings with Richard, I always was smarter after the meeting than I was.
Jim?
Just pointing out that we are in the beginning stages of settlement. Does look like our fall settlement is going to be about average, maybe just a tad above average. But, and I do not have the exact numbers yet. We're still pulling all of those calculations together as far as how it's going to be distributed. But I'll let you know as soon as I know. We did go live with the new financial software on December the 3rd. You probably noticed that the account numbers look a little bit different than what you're used to. I don't know if you noticed it or not. The department heads might have. But this is a new numbering format that's used by this software. It's a little bit of shorthand that we didn't have the luxury of using before. So we're certainly appreciative of that. And that's all I can think of at this juncture. Thank you.
Jim? Anything?
Me? Yeah, well, she said that she's working on settlement, so we got our stuff turned over to them. So now it's in their ballpark, so, yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to, this is Janet's last couple of days, so weeks with the county. So she'll be, I just wanted to tell her I was, appreciated working with her. She's been good to work with.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Janet.
Sure.
Gary, I have one other question on the highway. It said that we needed to put a response in by the 17th, I think. Is that something you all are going to handle or does the highway department need to do something in particular?
No, it's just the auditor's responsibility to reply to that one way or the other. And so I try to get a consensus from the council and commissioners as to how they want me to do that, so.
It's a good point. I mean, it's that way with that and the CCD and approved rich fund. But there's money in those accounts, there's cash that will cover those shortcuts and we kind of expected that. So we knew we were going to have to do this. But it's a good point.
Yeah, I think there's still one response.
Yes, yes, I have to.
Proceed through that time.
Right. I do have to, it's a little, I might have it here, actually. Yeah, it's a little page where I check one box or the other. And so I'll just be checking the no changes requested box. And then we'll do our appro-
What's the timeframe on the inclusion of your appropriation?
Well, that, we're going to figure that out coming up when you determine when you're doing your January meeting. And then I'll know when I need to get the additional paperwork so I can start advertising things. Okay?
Department heads.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Sure.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Angela?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Angela?
We had our first DOC audit yesterday, which has been a, Biden nails over. And we don't have our official grade and scores until next week, but they said that we did pretty good, that's their word. So we're happy to have that over with. It's a one. That directive pays three positions currently. So obviously we want good scores to continue getting it in.
Missed anybody?
I'll give you the sewage board report. They're still working on the new sewage along 32 East. Moving rental. I thought they might start on the pumping stations in January, more than the January, whatever, February. So that's kind of the last word we had from the engineers up here. Unless you think they did enough for us.
Obviously California, the last meeting, so I missed it. Keep going. And their information is up there.
But I think things are moving along pretty good.
And now it's also, it's sewage water, isn't it?
Yes, we did get approval from the state.
If we need that, yes.
If we need that, that's a piece we have.
Anyone else?
About RDC stuff, is it moving anywhere?
Well, it's pretty much waiting on, RDC is, not a lot going on right now because the sewer's going in and we're paying those bills. John, are we, we're still working with American Water?
We are. And I think-
Is there anything these guys need to do?
There's nothing these guys need to do with that.
Okay.
No. You know, Indian American Water has offered to fund the construction of the water project instead of using the TIF taxpayer dollars. They can do that. So we're negotiating with them. And then in order to make that happen, the commissioners have to adopt a infrastructure development zone. And so they'll be working on that in January, February, I'd imagine. And so you'll hear about that, but it is a time. I know that both Gary and Terry have been involved in that discussion about, Mark, a little bit about private sector versus public sector. So this is an example of preserving those TIF dollars for something else and, I mean, the private sector picked that up.
Dan, but the first step that RD, the RDC already approved that, is that correct?
They approved, yeah, they approved the resolution asking the commissioners to create the zone. And now there's a kind of a reset, once again, the commissioners have to do that over caring. So, yeah, the RDC has passed the ball to the commissioner.
I think that's a procedural item that the sewer board needs to take care of at our next meeting and pass it on to the commissioners, just to show that we support this concept. I just had a question on why you talk about preserving the RDC or the TIF funds. Because American Water's not going to be charging current customers a surcharge or anything. Are you negotiating that out right now? Is that what's happening?
Well, it's regulated, actually, but, you know, what they committed to verbally or writing is they would not charge their existing customers, that they would be allowed three to five years in the future to begin charging a surcharge to users in the zone, which would be new people, for that capital cost, but it would be spread over 20 years. So all new customers in that area for 20 years would pick up the cost of that $1.9 million project. They're generally not allowed to spread the cost of a special project over all their other customers. And so we believe that that's how that surcharge would be handled. But that's really, that's up to the RC, but we want them to make that commitment. And we want to shake their rate case a little to protect them.
I thought that was kind of one of the things. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do they have a claim, do they have a claim to pay?
Yes, I received this yesterday. It's an invoice from the Association of Indiana Counties for newly elected official training, and the dollar amount is $150.
Do I have a motion? May I? The audit makes a motion?
Yes, sir.
Terry seconds?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
Did we have any new elected officials from the council over the training?
Yep. Tom Melch.
Okay, good.
All in favor? Aye. Most? Yes? Public comment? Mike?
I wanted to take a minute to thank Janet for all her service in the county and her hard work. She's been a while. As a treasurer of the county, and we appreciate your public service and work in the county. Wish you well. We wish you well.
I think she has all her bags packed.
She's sharing her with Dick. You guys rank again.
Yeah. Take the same, though.
And Richard Chastain, I wanted to say some words. The Chastain family and the Luke family go back as well to the veins of a number of years. Back to moving in at high school. In fact, whoa. Richard Chastain, or Dick Chastain and Marley Chastain were good friends of my mom and dad's. And Dad, in his later years, when he was fully retired, would come out of his office and say, "Boys, I gotta go. The general is called and I have to report." They were going to go with tee times, some golf, some air. And Dad got to be pretty off, and then he got to write it down on a calendar. And my younger brother looked at Dad when he was putting down his golf outing, he was on the calendar, and said, "Dad, don't mess up our calendar with the days you're going to be gone. Just put on there when you can." And Dick Chastain was one of the golfing buddies that he pretty began with. So I appreciate your friendship with my father. I appreciate your community service, the hard work you've done with the guards, the work you've done with veterans. I think Richard's done a lot of work with veterans and community service that people don't realize. And he does it and gives freely. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate your help, being a mentor to me on this council in the last couple of years. All that, I wanted everybody to know. We really appreciate it.
Hey, Mr. Payton.
I'd just make a comment as I leave this council. Mike Fons called me the other day and I said, "Mike, what we really need in Montgomery County is a stronger Democrat Party." And then I said, "If we do that, and if you have a stronger Democrat Party, then we wouldn't be able to fight amongst ourselves quite so, quite so much." And so I'm rooting for you to come up with something here a little bit stronger." And I said, "I remembered here a few years ago when we had our debate, if you could call it that, out at the 4H building when I was running for my third or fourth term, I don't know what it was. And I said, I, I thought as I was sitting on the stage at the 4H building that we had Dr. Hadley and he was smarter than the whole bunch of us sitting on the stage." But anyhow, if I can, if I can live for another two weeks plus, I will be the only guy representing the first district of Montgomery County that has lived because the two previous guys that helped this job, which was Bill McLamrock and Charlie Bob Bummel, both died in office. And I'm hoping to hang on for two, two weeks and a few days and so that I will break that mole. But I'm probably the oldest guy to hold this council. I'm 85 years old and, and the good Lord willing, I'm going to make it pass the 1st of January. But I want to tell you, this has been, in my retirement years, I thought I was too old probably when I came on this council, 13 years ago or whatever, but in my retirement years, this has been a great fun job. Great fun job. God bless you all.
Thanks.
Thanks, too.
One other comment I wanted to make is I want to let everybody know that Andrea, with the probation, she really stepped down on this budget thing. We kind of, 11th hour, and she had to kind of work overtime to get her budget adjusted and was willing to get that done. It really helped us out and I'm just thinking about that. Appreciate what you did. Any other comments?
I just, rarely do we have all three commissioners here at one time, so I'd like to just reiterate something that I noticed from the planning process and the draft of the land use maps that show the proposed concept of what the land use should be. And the area that's marked industrial land use, industrial parks in the south part of the county is my district. I started at the very south tip of where you colored in the land for industrial, and I went to the landowners. And I haven't made it all the way through to the north yet, but starting at the south, the south third of it, I have 99.9% of the landowners that are colored in green for industrial park that say they don't want their land use zoned by the county and they don't want to be in an industrial park. That encompasses about 52 million square feet of land that, and 99.9% of the landowners inside of that area prefer to keep control of their own land and decide whether they would rather it be industrial or agricultural. So just a feeling of, you know, the last election could be misconceived as a referendum that this is what the people of the county want. It's more about, you have something to say, John?
Misconcede?
Yeah, misconcede. You want me to explain that misconception? The misconception is, is that that was referendum on zoning when actually, the truth is, it was more a referendum on Judge Kavanaugh and Boarder Wall and things like that. It was, if you look at the true statistics of how the vote went down, it was a lot of street ticket pulls on the Republican side that had nothing to do with local issues. If you really want to know what the landowners of the county think about the control of their land, ask the landowners. Thank you.
Move on? Next council meeting is December 18th at 7:30 in library?
Seven.
Seven, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't put that on there.
It has to do with the discussion, publicly discussion on the ERA designation. We need to make an organizational meeting for January.
I will not be returning until the 5th of January from a vacation.
By statute, we're supposed to do this by what date?
They like you to do it in the first week of January.
You know, we've been waiting on the second Tuesday of the month.
That would be the 8th.
That would be the 8th.
That sounds good. Yeah, it's still the first week, right?
It's not allowed, is it? It has to be the first day. First day. It just has to be just the 8th. So the 8th is fine.
So let's make it. Here?
This is all just me.
You want me to come out and advise? That way we'll know whether you made it to two weeks.
Yeah, that'd make good.
You made it, Terry?
I moved with- It'll be in the paper.
That way we'll know whether you made it to two weeks.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I move as...
That'd be in the paper.
I think we have our organizational meeting on 8th of January, 2018, at 9 o'clock.
Check for second page of the journal.
All in favor of meeting of January 8th, 9 o'clock?
I...
Supposed, pass.
Well, so moved to, to Jerry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Richard, thank you. Well, the best thing that I've had to be was good work with you. Well, I appreciate it, thank you.